Today's day is going to be the most memorable day of your life. I, Isha, welcome you all to this wonderful event named Professor Dr. Ali Irani's Coffee with Us. Okay, so I would request to everyone to please have round of applause for him. For this, I require that let me introduce the host of the ceremony, Mr. Ashish Shathur sir. I would request everyone to please have a round of applause for him. I would also welcome Professor Dr. Ali Irani sir. He is a renowned and honoured personality in the field of physiotherapy. His proficiency is highly sought after in this sports world. He is a physiotherapist for Indian cricket team from 1987-1997. I would request everyone to please have a round of applause for him. Guys, Sadiya Vasti Rani Chaiya, I don't think it's time to stop the class. But it's time to show our lot of people, really. Please have a round of applause. Thank you so much. I would hand over this mic to Mr. Ashish Shathur sir, so please have a round of applause for him.
Thank you, thank you, Isha, thanks a lot. And it's a pleasure and a privilege to share the ties with such a distinguished personality, Dr. Ali Irani. I think we know him very well. Those who are for physiotherapy, they know he is the vanguard of physiotherapy. And those who follow cricket or any other sport, they know him for his sport and the profession he serves. A pleasure to have you here and I think we need a big round of applause for our guest today, Professor Dr. Ali Irani sir. Sir, coffee with Ali Irani. We took this on something and we wanted to do something different for physiotherapy. We have been organizing seminars and sessions for all different fields. So for medical, our vice chancellor has started Living Legends of Medicine. We have a big of innovators and then those who are out of league, those are outliers, we have coffee with them. So it's a pleasure to have coffee with you and I think we have a wonderful session. All the audience are just waiting for you to tell about what you are, what you, how your history, about your future plans and more so about your experiences in life. So, the first thing sir, if with your permission if I can start. Ah, please, yeah, sure, sure.
Good evening everybody, thank you Ashish. I thought I'm having coffee with two people. But I think so your vice is the Dr. Mishra is eating away or maybe you part of it when he's talking.
You can, can we have a chair please? Sir, sir, are you? Are you?
I know it's a very long day.
You're very long.
The government have started long back and almost Jaipur is... Well, it was a surprise for me, first time coming to Lhens but it was full of surprises. Good campus, lovely campus, very rare to see. I have almost reached all the universities in India and abroad. But I really look forward on this zone having Rajasthan as such a lovely campus. I have been to Jaipur, I have been to Chhokhur. And then J and D U on the old university, the Namalit, then Lovely University. So going to South now, most of the places that I've been, but a lovely campus, I hope. And always I look at the college, the number of beds of the hospital. So you should understand, if there are fourteen hundred beds, that means there are patients. We run physiotherapy colleges where there is no hospital. They just go to some nursing home, they have an OPD outside, this is how it is. But you are lucky enough, gave your love at this great hospital and with fourteen hundred beds and many specialties coming. I am open to any of your questions, other than here is a long list of questions of me. Other than that you all can, I think so write down any question, send it here, definitely please, Ashish you read it and I will answer. I'm like a postcard, so don't worry. Sometimes I don't know who name people, so I won't be naming them, otherwise whatever it is, it will be answered. Thank you, I'm ready sir.
Yeah, so welcome everybody for this session. And we generally do living legends and we will do living legends with him as well. But this time, you know, we wanted to be a bit informal with him and with kind of his flowy personality, if I may say. I thought this will be a better kind of introduction of him to you and to us and to all those who are witnessing this particular event. So, and I mean, knowing him a bit by the kind of folklore because, you know, every time, you know, the cricketing and volleyball and he, he remains in news page three kind of personality. So, I, I thought, you know, this, this is a better introduction to him. So we thought of this informal sort of gathering where everybody is, I mean, initially we thought that we will have some things, you know, whatever you want to do on chips written and presented to him. But Dr. Irani said that no, it doesn't matter, whatever anybody asks. He is, he is quite open to, you know, answer everything and anything under the sun and also the moon. So, so with this kind of, you know, go ahead from him, we thought we will just be a bit informal and also ask all those questions, I know you have a lot of questions in your mind. And he is, I mean, just to say he is a kind of role model to all of us. I mean, we doctors, physiotherapists and all those who are connected with medical fraternity, he is kind of role model to all of us and I'm sure many of you would like to become like him. And so I think that is the thing that we are looking and he will relate to you lot of anecdotes he has had. And request he should at least give some names because that will give, you know, the context to all that is happening. Those, I mean, where, you know, these things are, issues are not a issue at all, you can name them. But otherwise, you can maintain confidentiality. So with this, I think, I request...
But sir, I think, Irani said nothing is confidential, sir, everything is there. It is an open book, so taking names, not taking them, we will understand, the clues will be in us. So sir, the role model you are, the icon you are in the field of physiotherapy. My first question would be, what made you choose this profession? Why physiotherapy?
I wanted to be a pilot.
Pilot?
I said I was working in Nanavati Hospital, Kenti. So when I was working there, opposite Nanavati is Bombay Flying Club. So most of the trainers used to come to the county and I should serve them. And I started asking them everything about the, about the details about flying and how I can, how I can become one. So they told me, don't worry, within eight months we will make you a pilot, six months you will be student pilot. I said eight months you will be having your... So they went on explaining, Isha was very keen, I told my dad, can I wait to be working towards being a pilot? And then I was in 12th standard, two things happened. So as a 12th standard science student in Bhavan's College in Mumbai, I used to captain the football team. So again, the...
Well...
I never played cricket, but I was the captain of football and landed up in cricket. So one, when I got injured, I went to Nanavati Hospital, the department, Dr. Arnold Joshi. Very senior, got message, so he is normal there now. He saw my knee and he said, hey, the problem is that you don't have a sports physiotherapist in India. So yours is a sports injury, so their goal was straight. Something has to be done. Two, it was a month of Ramzan and I read my Quran in English. So I was reading in English because I didn't know everything. So there's a phrase, those who, those who know and those who are reading it, I would say Surah Maayyadah, verse number thirty-two. It very clearly says, God says, if you heal one of my human being, you are healing my mankind. So that struck me very hard. So why should I not select a profession where I will be a healer? So I will go and heal and God has accepted, if you heal one of my humanity, I consider you will heal my mankind. So now I discuss with my dad, I said, hey, now I'm applying and I'm going to F A for the oral entrance exams. So finally I got selected in Delhi, did two months in Ames. And after that, the ad came from Boroda, there were seven physiotherapy colleges in India. There was Mumbai, Naipur, Delhi, Vello, Chennai, Calcutta, Boroda. Boroda was the only one giving degree, rest all were diplomas. So I went to track that exam in Boroda. And thank God, then there were always the exams that were two ways you have to write and there were interviews. So there were more interested in the interview, how you spell and what you do. And twenty seats, all the seven colleges had twenty, twenty seats. So you were only one forty seats for the whole country. So in Boroda, next morning I saw a binding on the top, so immediately take the fees. And I said, now Boroda is going to be the city of the house, so I prefer BP. But yes, as things went, by the time I was in second year of physiotherapy, people in Boroda knew me as Ali Physio. So maybe one, I was captain, I was captain in our very good college support team. Two, I was playing for Boroda district. Three, I thought of fighting an election which is called FR, faculty representative. So imagine the one side, all the MBA student and as I said, twenty in each year. So with eighty-five students from physiotherapy, I wanted to fight a post for FR. Thank God I won that election, so became famous in the university. So lot of strikes of nineteen seventy-eight, seventy-nine, eighty, there were lot of strikes in Boroda. And that Hanam, Anudan was also there in that I was leaking and we were successful. So from there, when I came back, started Bombay Hospital. I was in Holliday Institute also for the SHUT program of postgraduate program I P A patient. But I was thrown out of there within two months because any of the lightning people were there. So from there, I went to Bombay Hospital, started my research program. And then destiny took me from Bombay Hospital, I was supposed to treat the chairman of Nanavati Hospital. So when I went to this house and he came, okay, next week or days, they asked me, can what, what are you, from where you belong, where you were born? So I told him that I was born in Nanavati Hospital, I was brought up in Nanavati Hospital, I have been working in Nanavati Hospital. In your county, so he said, then what the heck, you are a new employee of the hospital, so you should be captain of Nanavati Hospital. And within a month, within a month, now when I was in Bombay Hospital, my seven o'clock to nine o'clock, seven thirty to nine thirty slot was for sports people. This was the big physiotherapy department, Dr. Ram, I've learned a lot from him, he is normal again. But I remember the last two months, every Saturday, Sunday, I used to fly to Abdaba because there was not very much cancer and everything was just, so just wanted to grasp whatever knowledge he had. So every Saturday, Sunday, I was visiting Abdaba, I learned a lot from him. And when I came out to Nanavati, it was hardly within fifteen days. So I was reading a lot of Hanuman Singh, the chairman of selection committee for cricket, he is from Dungarpur. Then Paulie Umbreger, I was treating most of the sportsmen, athletes, football. Because Bombay Hospital is close to all the plants, to work on cricket ground, etc. So I was treating that, so Hanuman Singh told me, you are at the wrong place. It's an Indian cricketing issue. So when I acquired seventy, fifty people had given applications, so from fifty-four was selected. From four-three, all of these were the Dr. London from Chennai, then Dr. Radu was from Delhi, Dr. Arnold Joshi from Mumbai, and I was only physio. So I still thought, can I, no chance. So from four, they decided on two, so when they made two, two was Dr. Arnold Joshi and me. So, Ani Ramani said, they both can go, I will pay for both. But ICC rules said only one can go. So again, new interview for both and we both are friends. So I went in praise to him, he is good, he has come from US, he does arthroscoping, he knows everything. I didn't know, when he went in, he told Paulie Umbreger for the final interview, I am a surgeon. If you want something to happen on the ground, he should be going. That's how I came into Indian cricket. Being the first physio in any sports team of the country, a lot of responsibility was there. If you are successful, then you are part of all the sports. And if I was not successful, then I don't know whether you would ever want it. That seven physiotherapy college would have become eight also. So being on the ground, being there, everything changed. I think the destiny of physiotherapist changed, like many of the seniors tell me, we did physiotherapy seeing you running on the ground. Many people say, I have Dr. Nadra, he is an arthroscopist from our hospital, Dr. Nadra. The best thing is, he said, I have treated him when he was an athlete. I have taken care of all his injuries. So he says, I went and did orthopedic surgery, seeing you, then I went and did arthroscopy, so I can do all the knee details. Then first time I entered, Tanavati came to meet me, he said, I am joining in Nanavati because of you. So in that, that's...
Okay, so, great sir, nice, nice to know how you got in the Indian cricket team. But yes, maybe it's a loss for players, it's a gain for the Indian physiotherapists. And though you could not become a pilot, but you are flying higher than what you tried to fly. A round of applause for the physiotherapist of Indian cricket team. So my next question you already answered, you have, you have been in the Indian cricket for ten years. You have watched each player very closely, I think from Navaskar to Bhuvneshwar, you have worked with anybody of them. And you have been the, you have been with the Fab Four, which are for fabulous four of the cricket, the Tendulkar, Gamboli, Dravid and Lakshman. First thing, what do you think, what makes them different from others? It's not related to physiotherapy, but what makes these people different from others?
I think it's fire in your body. I have always seen the success of people have to be grounded, you know. If you know the story of a diamond, it's a charcoal, they remove it, it's like a pole. But enough grinding on it, even polishing on it becomes a diamond. And some of the diamonds are turned into solidar. So some become a solidar, but rest are diamond. So in cricket also, I have seen all of them have gone through tough time. The way they have got, were going for practice. I was talking to your living, I was talking to a chairman, I was saying, I was seeing like one of our players, cycling when he got back this. And during practice, here, here is nose bleeding. So the coach could only say, go back home. So he had to saddle down from Shivali Park, coming to Vandra with the nose bleeding. But these are the things which gives the fire, you know, cannot win the game, that makes him tough. But we had players, so you won't believe, yeah, I have seen players, if there are servants to put the pads on.
Is it so?
The people, the people who put the pads on, you will go like that, so the house comes. And when they have gone to the next, then they come back, they will do this, somebody remove the... But I don't think so they will use it. So there should be a fire and I'm sure all of you, it's hard work. Please, the simplest example I can give you for yourself, so don't think what you will make. Right, if I'm standing here, if I try to change my shadow, I can't catch it. But if I turn away, the shadow will follow me. So please, most of you all are thinking, what you will learn? So money will follow you only if you are dedicated to your work. Mumbai Hospital, my salary was six hundred rupees a month, a month, my lowest pay. Right, and highest we have got is one lakh seventy-five thousand rupees per one minute. So we are, we are not people to be employed. I feel every physiotherapist within himself or herself is a consultant. When I was taking sixty rupees for private patients, sixty rupees for home visit. I knew a lady who was taking three thousand rupees. Sixty rupees was we were taking, she should charge three thousand to evaluate her patient. Right, so these are the things that gives you the head. I said, I'll cross her target. Anyhow, I don't do home visits, I don't go home. But the offer makes me feel very nice, when they say, what do you want? आप दर के आते हमारा patient देखो, कितना चाहिए? So it feels nice when that is told you, what you can get. So please, remember this shadow, if you chase the shadow, it will keep going ahead. But if you turn back and dedicate your work, I never thought about what I will earn. Never bothered me also. I was, I only knew, hey, I am there to heal, so maybe if I heal, rest God has to do. And to have that fire in your belly, so more so this cricket club. Initially, when they come, they come from a, a place which is, you know, from villages, I can say, a small town, they have not seen, right, where they have not seen a western project, the first thing I had to teach them, should always sit on it. So they should go and sit over and fall and first as you see them injured, right? But they have the fire in the belly and that's how they become, they work hard. I have seen a spinner practicing for four to five hours a day, one single stunt, single stunt and a coaching. The ball, when he, when he should bowl, he should hit the coaching and the stunt, single stunt.
Single stunt?
And then he played for India, made a world record at Chennai, do you remember, against West Indies? Sixteen rupees.
Sixteen.
It was a world record.
Have you heard of him? Okay. You think, I think you might be knowing the names. Thank you, thank you sir. So it's the fire in the belly which separates you from others, I think, great sir, great. And sir, in the initial days, if I come of eight teams, when we won the World Cup and we came back and after that, there was a revolution in cricket, as sir, the whole cricket, dancing matches and everything happened. But Indian cricket team was, used to very be very bad in feelings, so they were called legats, they were lazy enough to chase a ball, to take, make singles into travels. So what changed is, I think your contribution has to be immense in that.
Our problem was, there was nothing like warming up. Even the car, who are riding, they are two wheeler or four wheeler, when to start, if you raise it, that raise is the warming up of the vehicle. So that system was not there. So when I joined, the first thing is, there will be forty-five minutes of warming up. So warm up, if you warm up, more blood supply goes to your muscles and the tissues. And once, that will help to stretch more, so there was a warming up program, there was a stretching program. And then as if you were playing test, I used to have a cool down program. And cool down program was half the time of warming up. So if you are warming up for forty-five minutes, twenty minutes, I should allow them to cool down. Cool down was over on the floor, joking and we were saying mistakes of each other and, you know, teasing them and others. So that was a, you know, taken very lightly. So that system coming in late, then after I could conquer that, in eighty-eight, I could start pushing them for gym to do weight training, which is very important.
Nobody saw the gym?
It was rare, if you see before eighty-seven people hitting sixes, very rare, we had Zari Durani who could hit six anytime. Others didn't have that strength, they didn't have the power to clear the rope. So we started strengthening the shoulder. So whenever they hate the ocean, it will be outside.
Oh, that, that created the difference, I think. Now I think Indian cricket team is very good. So my next question is, whom do you think is the fittest cricketer of Indian cricket and also of the world, the fittest?
I, I talk, talk about India, I think so Kapiya was the fittest.
Totally, he was, he never missed a match, I think, he has a shot.
No, he just played twice, they were training in Delhi. Our training program was eight o'clock, so six o'clock he should train with the hockey team. And as soon as he did that, he should continue with us.
Okay.
So, you know?
So that's the fire that I have.
I thought you should just, whenever, Haksavi, you should just go for a marathon, you should keep running, you should follow him.
Okay.
I, I believe hockey would be a more strenuous activity on terms of football.
He have never taken tough, he have always taken the, when hockey, they have to use the tough. It's a, I think so the exercise also come up, but he could finish with that and join us.
Okay. So he played number four. And about the world cricket, if you can name somebody whom you think is a fussy, everybody.
No, there is a very big definition.
Okay.
I feel in cricket, the definition for a fast bowler, fitness will be different, a wicked keeper will be different, a fielder would be different. I, if you have seen Jockey Rose, one picture in CC I was playing in Ramon Stadium, you will find him like this. And he had, he had taken that catch.
That is fair.
Parallel to the cup. I don't know, but that was one of the world cup matches. So I think, you know, in feeling, nobody can beat him as far as fitness is concerned. So fitness becomes, all a person who can stand for two hundred runs.
Yes.
So it's not that you, nobody can get you out. You get tired, most of the players, I feel, they get tired and they want to come out, so they are out.
But there are players like Sehla who both run much, they just hit fours and sixes and they cross three hundred runs and he has hit twice.
One of the senior cricketers, when he won, he was stating of it, I think, so I totally, you can see a cricket ball like a football. You can bang it anywhere. He said, no, that's not my problem. My problem is when I would take runs, by the time I have taken two runs, my opposition has taken three runs, the other side. So that embarrasses me. And he should stand at the slips, he said, if I miss the ball, he said, there are eight cameras showing me how fast I can run. So that embarrasses me. So he was not hitting the ball, but changing the ball or taking the run in between, he said, that's why I don't do that.
Sir, in addition to cricket, sir, you are also, physiotherapists have done it for many Bollywood celebrities, I think. And cricketers and Bollywood stars are revered equally in India. Can you share some anecdotes of cricketers? How do these superstars behave so that our body physiotherapists can just understand their psyche and they can work accordingly? What is the key one thing when you create a star, what should you keep in mind? So if somebody walks in NIMZ University and he needs a treatment?
They are abnormal.
They are abnormal, okay.
They cannot take any injury, telling them, they will never play again. Same thing, stars and cricketers and sports or, they are same ones, that they can sell it to me, makes a lot of difference to them. But I remember after we started all this in cricket, there were two young, up twenty stars. And they had made a gym in the house and they used to highly come and see, yeah, going to the gym. So I still remember, I just met them, they were in the Sehta party, both of them. The videos were very viral, very viral on social media. And I was ignoring them, I was just standing, there's a famous politician, about the CDG, over at Sehta party, which is very famous in Mumbai. Atta Jhutna Vandra. So, when they came, this Pasan Charan did this song, so they came back and hugged me and all that. So you know, it, it's that, because I had them to become, start doing training. Nobody had the knowledge, but none of our earlier stars were doing any of the stunts. There are people to run for them, so they were showing on the backside. But the new stars that you see, it's good for physiotherapists, they are more injured because they want to do their stunt. Like so, most of the injuries are they wanting to do the stunt, because they want, when people are listening, we should be nice, hey, I have done it. So we had, we had lost one of the stars on helicopter, he wanted to jump, same opposite Nanavati Hospital. So when you jump, you have to fall on the airbag or the cartboards. So he didn't know the exact timing, so by the time he left himself, the helicopter had shifted, so instead of the cartboard, he landed on the ground. One day for that, so six months he was, five and a half months he was in Nanavati also, the man who was there. So now they want to do stunt, so fine. And then they started having that concept, the gym karna. And we have seen most of the stars, obvious stars will never be in half shirt to show their voices. But nowadays the stars will wear sleeveless to show that they have been doing gym and all that. But I remember very well, one of the stars telling me, hey, that acting is from you.
Yeah, acting is from you.
So your face has to be explicit to do the acting, not your voice. So anyhow, maybe I am close to them, they all come, I am in the hospital, the situation is in such a place, Nanavati Hospital. So in due area, where most of the stars say, so any injury they come and then one dead is the other one, like that. And then knowing this sport, so they feel their injuries are same, either they get injured in the gym, they get injured by, they get tired. Remember, one of the stars tried to jump from the fourth floor, but it was an airbag. But not knowing the pressure of the airbag, when he jumped on the airbag, he went back again, fourth floor and four, five times he went on landing. So he got a rib flash, so we were treating for almost a month. So there has to be technical people, because I was not the person to know how much air you should have in the airbag. I hate to know when you were jumping. But after that, most of the stars, now also even TV stars, all the live shows, everything, there are, Boroda to physiotherapy is always there. So we have found our place in all the reality shows, in all the series and all the films that are happening in Bollywood. Even there is a fight scene, chasing, songs, right? So I remember one of the heroine had got tankers trained while they were doing a song in my head. So from three AM, I started playing ball, aaja, 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 I want to repeat the movie, the song, thoda, she is ready to walk. So at around five AM, I went there, just did taking, and I said, continue. So suddenly I saw another Bhushkuri movie, I saw a tight under poker TV. So I said, Bhushkuri picture, then Nadev Rana is there. I saw a tight under the corporate, so I said, uh, Bhushkuri picture, then Nadi Bhai Raja, yeah. So they are named, remove, they are putting on a, uh, ninety rupees, and you all know, those are watch Bhushkuri movies. So after the scene was over, they said, cut, 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 let's see. So I took my bag. I said, kya aaja, as a name, usko reh boata hu, nahi dekha. So it, it is, they get injured, so they want you to continue, right? So, and most of them, their directors, producers, somehow they won my vision hours thirty-five years, and I'm in Nanavik Hospital. Born there, brought up there, I don't know how many movies I'm going to be there, in the hospitals, and I don't, I can be working at one place. So I go early morning, seven o'clock, seven thirty, I go there, and there till late night. Whoever wants to wake me comes there. So earlier, at one time, I got closer was from Mumbai Hospital, it was supposed to be seven thirty to eleven o'clock, eleven o'clock I was supposed to go to Hinduji Hospital, eleven to one, two to four, Lelapati, and four onwards to eight o'clock, Nanavik. So one day, I just took a decision, I told my chairman, buy me off. I don't want to go to so many places. So he says, what do you want? I said, I will do the department the way I want. At an art, there were six, seven patients, they were saying, today we see three hundred patients, right? So, uh, we were wanting to start in ninety rupees. So our relationship with doctors improved during ninety rupees. So please, all the principal, those who are there, please send your final year students, your interns, do ninety rupees. Your relationship with the hospital and their doctor improved. So we do, we do ninety rupees, we do holiday rupees, we do salary rupees. And my students, especially the M T student or interns that come, I don't know whether your college will allow your students to come. I would prefer, if the students come, they should come for four months, five months, but come back to your university and teach children, not be able to come to Mumbai. So whatever techniques they have done, they should give it back to your students, this is what I prefer. I think, I have given quota, I give quotas to goati, I do it for Rajasthan, I do it for Jammu, because people who are far away, I want them to come and learn and go back to the city. So we are consultant. Each one can't do more than ten patients a day. Right? So even if you have five, you have a lass in your life. And if you have ten, then you are too good. Right? And we all, and you prove yourself. And people will say, oh, they will chase you. Initially, no, I separated four, five patients a day, today is three hundred, we stop at three hundred. It's not that we don't have much more patients. We don't give appointment after three hundred, right? And working, so we are twenty-four seven. Like, more than hundred and ten physical therapists working in a department, it's huge. And our connection with all the surgeon, you talk about cardiac surgeon, orthos surgeon, joint replacement, they come, they discuss what they want, we follow their, you know, whatever way they want their patient to be treated. And twenty-four seven, there won't be a complaint, you all refused anything, they will be there, including all the sports team in Mumbai. Wherever there is sports events happening, they tell us, somebody is there. So we have everything, sports also, so people, you have to skill yourself.
Yes, very good, sir. And the key word here, students, buy me off, to reach at that level. Skill yourself till you can say these three words, buy me off. Hats off, up and applause for Doctor Ali Rani, sir. Buy me off, nice word. And I think the future is bright for physiotherapy because all these stars, as you have said, are doing action. They need a physiotherapist on the sets, they might have their own team also.
The morning I was saying, uh, India needs two lakh physical therapists. But our problem is eighty percent of the physical therapists are T A. So, uh, we give degree, but they work at the Dikra, they work at the.
Ladkiya? Dikra is okay, but Dikri need to practice it, otherwise, do laa, naa, ki, kaha se?
So, I, I know what you do. So, our registered physical therapists are almost sixty thousand. But I feel the practice in physical therapists in India are twenty thousand, because almost seven thousand are in USA, more than a thousand are in UK. We have more than six hundred, seven hundred in Australia, another number in Houston, Singapore, Hong Kong, everywhere, the physical therapist, all over the world. So we have lost almost, I could say, fifteen thousand physical therapists to our other countries, Euro countries. But, uh, so maybe twenty thousand are practicing in India, and we need two lakhs. So we have one ten.
Look at the.
Two lakh, I don't fear. Since when they say, there are two lakh physical therapists in India, I don't fear, everybody has one.
Everybody has one, but they have need to skill themselves, I think.
That's what the specialty, many more specialties in the world.
So, uh, that was my next question. Do you have a super specialization in physiotherapy? So somebody after doing the course, does he get a special, let us say, chest physiotherapy, post cabbage kind of thing? Or like orthopedic specialization or, you know, things like that?
Let me, I will just say, uh, initially, I'm talking about M T S, then coming to physical therapist. So everything was M T S. Believe me, the older M T S people also were in this, they used to see the three thousand. Everything, they go to the middle of the house. Then specialty became divided into two, it became surgery and medicine. Then medicines have divided into pediatrician, neurology, you know, psychiatry, it went on. Surgeon became neurosurgeon, orthos surgeon. Orthos surgeon, some divided into knee specialist, hip specialist, spine specialist, soldier specialist, then arthroscopic came. So with event of time, there was, I remember when, uh, M T started, masters didn't start in physical therapy, it was general. So you have, you have B P D or you have M T D. Then we thought of M T D, because at that, by that time, I was a lot of committee of making syllabus. We decided we do two, right? So we went for orthopedic and neurology. We never knew how good we will do in cardio. So cardio came next. Then committee based, based near the greschenka. Then sports medicine was started by James Yu. Right? And I think so now, a lot of people, a lot, a lot of people are doing pelvic floor. So many of our problems in this world has to do with pelvic floor. Started by one of our very senior therapists, who was in USM, he has written a book also. Right? So I'm sure that pelvic floor will become again a specialty. People will take that. But what we do, sorry, now in our M T program, I've taken a bigger umbrella. I don't call it proper, my specialty, M T V P, M S K, muscular skeleton. So muscular skeleton, you can select your thesis, joint replacement, manipulation, mobilization, spine, uh, uh, joint, uh, things. Only, the super specialty, they want only to knee replacement, but not his surgeon to knee replacement, so you should understand. You have enough patience, every day, then once he can, need cases done by the doctor, and he will keep referring to you. So in super specialty, maybe you come, I said, the same thing, maybe, uh, we have seen at the post, that one of my staff has gone and started in Delhi, Mahima. She's, uh, written a book also on parenting. So she's enough patience, yes. And she doesn't take more than eight patients a day. So I think it's forty-five minutes to all night, each patient. So she even teaches the woman how to become a mother. What are the, uh, precautions you have to take? When are you ready to be a mother? Then throughout the pregnancy, they teach you which exercise to be done, which muscles to be strengthened. So it itself has become a specialty more than self. So I think I, tomorrow some airline will start, they will also keep a physical on the flight, so to keep the comfort of the patient.
Comfort is more important of this. Great, great, thank you, sir. Moving from physiotherapy to another facet of your personality, the Cafe Iranian Chai. Cafe Iranian Chai, which is a documentary made for right chai, wala, to masta, and you have been a producer of the documentary. And in fact, that is a documentary which has won the highest number of awards ever in India. Give her applause for the documentary Cafe Iranian Chai. So how did you thought of producing it and what it is all about?
I said, my life was after school, coming back home, doing my homework, and four or five times to be working in the Nanavik hospitals, the begging. So making chai and my chai to be ready, you, please come to Mumbai, there's another chai that I make, I make with my hand and I give it to my guests. Uh, it's quite famous. And I saw all the Iranian restaurants fading away. So Iranians, which came from Iran, then there was no Pakistan, so it was Iran, border was India. And I pray from Mumbai was going straight up to Iran, a place called Zahitan. So many people who migrated and came to India, this was before the Second World War, before our independence. So when we came, they had nothing to know, so they were making. So my father also came at that time, so ninety years back, started a restaurant in Mumbai, one time, forty restaurants in Mumbai, and one of chai, the chai, the banmaska, omelette, whatever they could make. So I thought that restaurants were fading away. So I said, why not document it? So I started shooting in Hyderabad, Pune, Mumbai, these three cities I have taken, full of Iranian restaurant. Now, from there also, believing fifty, I started almost six years back, fifty percent of them have closed down. So hardly any fifty percent of the restaurants are there. So my thing, but there was another interesting, we will find it later on, there's another documentary I have made. It's called Sana Badus, the gypsies.
Sana Badus.
Yes, gypsies. So when the moguls, the history, when the moguls wanted to invade India, then they should come. So they didn't have enough army. So on the way, whenever they saw any gypsies, they should bring them to India, to show a big crowd. And they should loot India and go away. And Muhammad, he should every time come, bring the gypsies, loot up to Mount, down to the temples. And they should go back. So the gypsies are in India, three and a half lakh, they are called Sana Badus, gypsies. Three and a half lakh in India, you'll find them somewhere near Patna, I identified and I shot them, uh, Pune, Shivaji Nagar, Ghubli, uh, Chennai, Calcutta. There are the places we went and shot, so maybe that documentary will also come soon. I love keeping that, this will remain, because our next generation won't know that they were there. But I think, you see, they were brought for some other purpose, they have left here, they have made India as a country. So you will see blue eyes, most of them in this Bombay, Pune road, they are sending helmet, they sell goggles and glasses, this is not in Mohpal also, and, and even in Mohpal.
Okay.
Yeah.
Even in Rajasthan, actually, so this was, yeah, even in Rajasthan, there are a lot of gypsies, and as a matter of fact, gypsies start from Romania.
Yes.
All they were. Yeah, they are from Romania to India, they were, uh, all over the place, in the scatter, they used to think, just carry arms and go all over the place. In India, in Rajasthan, actually, they have, they are called, uh, forget the name, but they're just right, and they see blue to thousands, I, I, I'm sure of the.
So evening, he said, in Mohpal, evening, he is trading, he said, I bought one horse, he will take four goats for that horse. Then he says, one goat, some ten chickens. They trade amongst each other, and next day, maybe the cattle will come back to them. So that time pass is trading of cattle, it's amongst each other.
Yeah, Brahabal, it's Rajasthan.
I, I've done some thirty-two hour of shooting with this, uh, Sana Badus.
Sana Badus, okay.
And the best part was, I was asking one of them, okay, what are your profession, right? So he says, picking pockets, they're biting, looting, they're finding some profession.
Profession, okay, okay, very nice, very nice. Great, sir, great. And India's too famous Iranian, one is U and one is Roman. Have you thought anytime, I think Bollywood, because you have other traditions?
We are very close, right, we are very close, at the moment. I have done, uh, I, Majid Banidi did a movie with Ishan, called Beyond the Clouds.
Beyond the Clouds.
So I've done a role of the doctor who was an excellent patient. I get a lot of water from my friends who are all in film industry, but I prefer something better than the physical therapy. There was another movie made, Ancient, uh, movie, it was Ancient, the role was the girl makes the accident and requires only the physical therapy. It was shot in our department, so almost fifteen years we were shooting, and throughout a round of physical therapists was shown in there. So, uh, then I have done another, the movie is not released yet, it's an international movie, Salaam Mumbai. So a bigger role, a professor is there and then, uh, treating patients.
Oh, great, great. So sir has the exposure to Bollywood also. Applause for the superstar, Doctor Ali Rani, sir, great, sir, great. And, uh, would like to demonstrate something, I think, with Chamakkar and Odhu.
Many youngsters, uh, I want to only tell you about, okay, uh, when you are treating patient in India, the rule is like this, Chamakkar ka namaskar hota hai. So on the day one, if you can't show any result to your patient, don't expect your patient to give you the next thing. So some of your techniques should be such that the results are immediate. So I thought one of the thing that I do, those who can't touch their toes, if you are standing and can't touch their toes, two of you can come here. I won't touch you also, and you will show an increase in your rate.
Just two volunteers who can't touch your toes, tum bhi nahi paka sakte ho? Oh, yes, sir. Two volunteers, two rats, those who can't touch your toes, aye, all these authorities can also come, aye, sir.
Those who can come till here, I will see the outcome.
From, from a first floor, anybody wants to volunteer, please, aye, will help you have some good, hot toucher toe, my dear, you can do it. Jao, remove it, chalo. Thank you. Chaliye, aap chahiye, good, ho gaya, good, we move to.
Jo touch nahi kar sakte hai, jo touch nahi kar sakte hai, rupiya yahan a jaye, usse main, arey, pata hai, beta, loga karte ho, jo touch nahi sakte hai.
Can you call the principal?
Okay. Okay.
Where is the principal of physiotherapy?
This was, uh.
An sitting, aye, sir, aye, sir. Sir, there are two people, I tell you, there are two people.
One is Doctor Anshik and one is Ashish Marth.
We are not bitter. Can you do that?
I cannot, I'm.
You know, how much can go?
I'm not sure.
Good. So at least they know, I'll see that it increases, right? Sir, thank you. Okay, this was a research that I should spend ten to twelve minutes on each cricketer to release the hamstring. Before they could bowl or before they could go in that, it was a long process. Then I found a point of Asia, if I simulate that, I should get faster results. Then finally, I came to, okay, why should I risk? You have to take a pen, ball pen, and keep kneading that place, okay? So then they gave me the idea to make the player stand on a marble for two minutes. So you are going to tag them for two minutes, I won't take more than two minutes. You all know how much, sir, can you move your shoe? You go to face them, face them. Okay, go down. Fine.
Okay.
So you all know better. So I'm going to keep it exactly there, right? Fine. Take body with both, time in please. No, yeah, no. The initial twenty seconds are painful. We are stimulating fascia. I don't know, I don't want to talk more about fascia. Fascia is a network of our body, it's internal, right? So I think, so, uh, one of the workshops yesterday, I used to do that work there, so it's related to that. So any fascia you catch up in the body, if you can stimulate it, you get results. So this is for hamstring, I use it on all the back problems. So if you release the hamstring, the patient will feel better. And somebody is here, keeping the timer, thirty seconds, fine. So both a second, second?
Five seconds.
These seven? Five seconds, yes. Keep talking. So, uh, you don't need to spend ten, twelve minutes on your patients. So before you are treating your patient, I just ask them to stand on the marble, and then after two minutes, you will see the results. So. One minute. So you have just one more minute, go. The next thing that I want to show you all is, more than eighty-five percent of the people have neck problem. How to test it? When you take the neck forward, chin back, it's no pain, but when you push it back, it's painful, right? More than all ages, you have done the study twice in Mumbai, caught up people from outside the railway station also, and we found they have neck problem. And then looking to the right and left, only same, depending on how much of mobile you use, right? So the other patient, I say, it's bread and butter with jam for a physical therapist, is treating a neck problem. The patient gets addicted, they will keep coming to you, not every day, but off and on, they will get neck pain and they will come to you, right? So again, what you do, maybe after this I'll demonstrate that, this technique is very important, if you are learning, start going and doing it for your parents at home. Right? They will be very happy with you, right? They are feeling much better. Two minutes, so you leave, just come, okay, touch. Step out. Marble is yours. So I say in India, Shabat Gavka, namaskar hote hai. So I say in India, Shabat Gavu, namaskar hata hai. What to do, when, I always tell the story, a ship was not working, a ship. So a lot of engineers came and they did quotation and they could not repair it. They got a person who said, I am going to repair this and I am going to get charged with ten thousand rupees. They said, we have spent lots of rupees and the ship didn't start. So he says, ten thousand, he says, done, he said, get me a hammer. So he banged the hammer three, four times at a particular place and the ship started. So he says, hitting hammer you want ten thousand rupees, you have not done anything, hundred rupees also. He says, see, my hitting the hammer was hundred rupees only, where to hit was nine thousand nine hundred rupees. So where to hit the marble is important, right, otherwise if you do this, no patient is going to tell you, to kuchh kia hai, right? We do manual therapy, patients are not happy. So because our patient needs, we are, some of the patients are like that, even if you give them diet therapy, they feel, jyada le gaya, bhaadaa, bhaadaa. Finally they will come and go first, you give them essence of short, of charity, bhaadaa, they think, you know, they are paying money, jyada le gaya, you know. Right, so how much you pay, where to give the treatment, they say whatever. So if any questions are there, I come or I want to show that neck demonstration also, so you all can start at this treating your parents at home.
So any neck demonstration, you need some volunteer?
I will, I need to do with any neck problem.
Yeah, please, please come, please come, come, aajay.
Ah, which is four, do you think is the center, the least injuries? And which is four? And which, which is the argument for our university?
Any other chair please, for sir, we need chair.
So the governor of Bombay, don't allow any things to come without a swimming pool. Swimming is one of the best exercise, see when you walk, only your body cells is working, no extremity. When you swim, it is double the calories you are burning, it's two and a half times more. So your upper arm is working, lower extremity is working and the spine is rotating. And you get corrected, I always give a reason, you get up in the morning, you brush your bending forward. Then you are working, you are cooking, you are driving, you are writing, right? And then come and sit on the sofa at night to watch TV and then you come to sleep at night, either on your right side or left side. So this spine never does any extension, right? That's why Surya Namaskar was made, like you forgot, seven thousand years back, right? So you, so you, you have to unwind yourself, so I have made a shortcut for it. All of us has to be in this position, half in the morning, half in the evening, just one moment. So when you are lying in this position, your thoracic gets the extension, right? And all the back problem you will see, there will go extension in the thoracic, so they are overusing the lung. So it's like lifting a bag with your hand, you can, but the same bag with a finger, you can't lift. Because all the load is on the finger, so please understand the back load has to be taken by thoracic also. So if your thoracic has gone infection, you are not getting any load, so that's why I think Surya Namaskar, seven thousand years back, say. Get up early morning, get ready, go outside the house, face the sun, do your mantra until the first day of sun falls on you. Three thousand years back, Moses said, go to the really world early morning, your head and wealth I shall protect. That's why Jews are the richest. Two thousand years back, Jesus came, said the first mass is better than sitting in the church the whole day. And one thousand four hundred years back, Prophet Muhammad came and kept the morning Azan, right? So Australia went after it. Given all the seven thousand years till now, there are two things common. Early morning, outside the house. And then the thirty of Oodle came. Australia proved, one hour twenty minutes before sunrise, the universe releases an ozone which is very, very, very good for your health. Studies went further and it proved that there is no animal or bird in the world that doesn't get up one and a half. So they understood ozone better than UND, right? So I am not telling it for the Jaipur youngsters, Mumbai, all the youngsters come home after breathing the ozone.
So which way is the free to ozone?
They breathe the ozone and then they come. So please understand what science says, my students have done a study, one thousand morning walkers, one thousand evening walkers. All the morning walkers were healthier than eating walkers because of the ozone. So don't say any religion, asking you to get up in the morning, you want to be happy, get up in the morning. Again, the best exercise sports want to swim, I have never seen a swimmer, Otus Khartik, none of the best swimmers of countries are from this two class. Never seen a patient, thirty-five days. So you know, they are injured, you can't do anything, they get drowned, you can't do anything, so they won't come for visit. So best sports today is correction, right? What we said, my, my colleague this year, a student is doing a study, morning walker, when? So morning, before sunrise walker and after sunrise walker. So if you have a pet at home, cat or dog, leave the door open, except you one and a half of before sunrise, they will go out. Whatever reason you want to give you gift, if the bird is at your home, keep the window open. They feel the ozone, as soon as they feel the ozone, they will start chirping. So they understand ozone better than UND, but you want to get up, Surya Namaskar, same people do Surya Namaskar, I get up at nine o'clock, I do Surya Namaskar. But where, where, there is screen open, you have to feel the ozone. So please, no religion wants, nobody needs you, don't get up morning, God doesn't need you, God doesn't want or whatever you want to do, it's for your own health. You want to be happy, you do it, it's only showing with the weight, right? You are coming to neck, right?
Neck, yes, fine, so we have three in time, three. Sir, Salman Khan. From scientist to comedian, Salman, very nice, taalea ba jaye sir, please, bro.
In Mumbai, for me is very important is SLR, I see, pre and after the treatment, for neck, rotation of the neck. So you are going to look on your right, just turn and see whom you can see, can you see the guy with the camera, this one? No, fine, so you can't, you can see the speaker, then, fine, so you can see the speaker on the right side. Can you see left, yes, the side, you can see any of your folks, no? Which one, one, two, three on your left? Five? Five, okay, so one thing was clear, it is right and at the center. So right, he could see the speaker, left, he could come here, so all, all of us are going to have that, right? Depending how we use our phone and how much we do and which side is deep, right? So it's, so now, the techniques, I am going to use the chenta, right? I am going to use my thumb, so we will see what I do and we will see the range again. I'll, I'll move both sides, okay, so I am just going below the skull, occipital and thorax, occipital joint, just push it back, you keep pushing. See, I am holding it, not allowing it, I want the transverse process. I am at C one, push it back, again push it, C two, come. I am at the spine process, two, push again, push again, push again, push again. I am on the spine process, push, okay, now I am going to come on the transverse process, push, 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 push. Fine, okay, you are going to look on your right again. Left.
Great, sir, pura thing, can you see? Can you see the beautiful mansitting in this photo?
Fine, so hardly half a minute, right? Increase, always remember my spine, increase of range is decrease of pain. So whether the patient is acting or not, or fine, we will ask him later, right? But you saw the increase in range, definitely the patient is feeling better. So you have, I always say for visitor, anything, any joint that you are picking, give ten minutes for the modality you want to use. Please use some bhakti therapy, I call it bhakti therapy, diet therapy, ultrasound, SSF, all this bhakti, like is used. So you have to give bhakti therapy, I know patient kuchh nahi kia, right? And ten minutes, use your hand on them and ten minutes make them to exercise, so in thirty minutes, thirty minutes over. In neurological condition, it's a little more, forty-five minutes to one hour. So this is what you all are going to do, right? Now I am going to assist and push a little more to get him more rate. Okay, to your right. Chandra, from hurt, it has come up to chandra, so it's an increase in range. So definitely there is an increase in pain, so if I had to ask you when you came from the scale of zero to ten, zero is no pain, ten is under it will pain. What was your pain?
Maybe six, seven.
Okay, can you say now, feel what it is?
Um, normally, easy.
Fine, so he doesn't have pain now, so tell me, if I would have given him fifty settings of diet therapy or ultrasound, SSF. I wouldn't have got the age, so please use your hand on the patient. Unless you don't use your hand on the patient, you are not a good observer, huh? Four, look to your right. Okay, you can see any of them, standing, two, four, two. So I am not going to go through that change, I am at that, okay, the self-chenita. No, I don't. There. So you can, you don't need to do it, so what is the homework of the patient? Take a cloacheef, towel or dupatta, hold it there, keep your hand wherever it is and go to the task. Right, keep pushing it, you are standing, you are finding muscle and you are mobilizing it, you can keep changing it, you can look up and do it. You can look down and do it, it changes the level of survival. There are others, next time when I come, at least this is the main thing, if you start doing it alone, they will be very happy. Okay, so in her case, I am not going to do chenita, I will stay, go and mobilize it, so she said, four was here, two was here. No, I don't want to achieve. See this, support the head on your chest, support it, there, and click. Like, you don't want, you don't, this, you don't, your hands, you don't nothing, yeah, it is there, right? Then, I click, okay, once it there, you want, I do you know. Four.
Kisanath or another one?
Six. Four was six.
From two to six?
Okay, see better, thank you.
Sir, Chamakkar, we have the best of the world.
Please don't forget, this is the main exercise, those who have children and don't make them. You know, earlier the children is to lie down on the stomach and put the leg up and he should object, you don't have to do that. But they do just like camel, he should object, but today they are the best, right? So this, under your chest. Half in the morning, I play with my mobile, I read my images in the morning, answer everybody this, right? And night before I go to sleep, I read a book or something, okay, this, we are unwinding. This is one of the best exercises for the spine alignment of the spine, that over the neck, thoracic and above, okay? And then for the neck, what I showed you with the dupatta, for the back, you can form a fold, if you have lower back problem in SR. This, opposite side, okay, and you can come up. If you have a back problem.
So we have one.
I have, I have two spine surgeon, I have two spine surgeon in Bombay. So before surgery, when they plan the surgery, the patient has come to me, they have said in the conferences, Kehani takes away our patient from our throat. Right, they are ready for surgery, but always will get fantastic result, start extension, I remember myself in nineteen eighty-five, wanted any back problems, lived this line supine. Traction, fifteen days, twenty days, now it is reverse, day one, prone, till under the chest. Bring them up, the disc goes back, if I had a model of spine, I would have showed you all why I am doing extension, right? The disc goes back, right, and please, every back problem is not this. Majority of them are upslip or downslip, see where my wallet is? Never put a wallet behind you, you are sitting on something where you get an SI joint out of alignment. So please take upslip, downsill, hopefully next time I come, I will ask the V C to get me a whole day. I will come here morning, start at eight o'clock till six in the evening, I will talk, I will notice all of my notes. Who you are seeing? The guy standing there. How many chairs? Your chair, you can see. Sitting on chair, all you are seeing in bar, four people sitting there, right? All four, you can see, the last one is standing, you can raise your hand, see, see, you can see him, raising the hand, no. Which one, how many can talk? One, two, three, four, five, this one, first row, seven, first row. Six, first row six, and the guy standing there, so I don't think you, I should show you all the technique. Again, just to remind you all, thumb, use your thumb, she pushes back, push your neck back, push your head back, relax, push again, relax. Push again, relax, I am on the transverse process, I am on the transverse process, I go on the spine process now, push back, push it, push again, push again. At length, occipital joint.
Pakkaraguru.
You can see, yes, anyone, make him move, stand there, any of the people sitting there, you can, okay, you can do that, sir. How many back out? Can see the guy raising a table? Chair.
Chair.
Good. Wait, they mobilize also, I was thinking, but I can do it in supine, there are many ways to mobilize, you do it in supine, you do it prone and sitting, so. I am just mobilizing. The other way to give fraction, you don't need to really hang the patient nowadays, okay? So just, ah, put your wrist under the head, so from supination I will do pronation. Supination, pronation, supine, I will bring a recidive, right? Supination to pronation, that's fraction one, two, how I mobilize.
Oh, chair, chair, no.
If I would have taken her height, if there was a proper measurement, after I feed the spine, there will be increase of two centimeters in height. We, all of us lose it in our thoracic area. Come here, they're not seeing you, no blind man is serving. Okay, so what I, okay, look anyone, my one hand goes below the scapula, above the scapula, and then the twist.
You won't get the chance. Chahadkar, if you're not able to see this, if you're not able to see.
Please listen, listen, I'm under the scapula, I'm under the scapula, above the scapula, and I push. See, she is feeling the clicks. Okay, so now, but do both side, now look this side, look this side. Again, under the scapula, above the scapula, and one push. And I reverse it. Few pushes at the thoracic, mid-thoracic, where the flexion happens, okay? And lower thoracic is going to be, I just twist her. Twist her. And now, face me, lie one side. So I'm going to use the lumber now, thoracic is over, your whole hand. Keep your hand here, this leg goes here, this can is here, see, there's a rotation in the lumber. Other side. What is, make this, your hand there. Right, the clicks, come.
Ten sixteen, from two to ten, and seven to sixteen.
Okay. Amazing. In sports, you don't get enough time, I won't get all this time, I'll run on the ground. I know the person is lazy, we need to mobilize, so I'll do a shortcut. Okay, we are going to hold your neck like this. Very well, leave it there, leave it there, right? Okay, now you.
Look at happiness on our face. Experience of Kesar. Are you not proud that physiotherapy joined you? Nishan Keshav, great, great, Ashwath Josha.
Okay, please understand, my height would have increased by now, right? I feel if all of us can go to the sports field like this after all this, or go for an exam like this. Because I released all those points, which is therefore stress, right? I got the movement, increase in range is decrease in pain, you don't have to cross question the patient. So if I see the range increase, I'm happy, the patient will be happy, you don't have to worry. Any questions on this? This is your friend, but we can only do this, all can survive in life, only doing this. Eighty-five percent of Indians have a neck problem, eighty-five percent of them have it. Start doing it at home to your parents, do it, do the same, also do it amongst each other, you know, keep including the skill on this. Mobilization of thoracic, survival, lumber.
Come to eight o'clock, you will find lots of patients. Questions? You have a face or a hand, you will introduce our second and you can ask the question.
Please, I give all the explanation, skill yourself, at least once a year, go to a good conference to learn. And I hope your friends will continue to have this conference every year and get all the experts from all over.
There will be a lot of concept, you have to do it, you have to do it.
V C beta, I have permission, they love it.
Sir, next message, I can be straight, we have permission, full permission, you need to just come and get us.
Yeah.
So, sir, this is Dr. Anadi Kushwa, and my question is, sir, how can someone be so amazing? Sir, we are looking forward for that, sir.
I don't know, I just know what is in my, actually a nice story. Bulbul sings very well, they say, some people say, who Gakkha ka pani pita hai, some say, Ne Ne Shimla ka seetha hai. And some say, Ne Ne, who Saman me Kashmir jata hai. So it's the weather of Kashmir sunset, it is apple of Shimla and sunset, it is the Gakkha's water that makes it. So when they ask the koil, he says, no, neither I go to Kashmir, neither I have apple from Shimla, neither I drink the water of Ganga. But whenever I sing, I sing it from my heart. So certain, certain topic, which I don't know, certain topic that I don't know, I don't talk on. Like politics and zero, so I will never know which party, I treat everyone, all the parties I treat, and I'm not interested to know who is from which party. Because I treat them as a patient, I never bother. And when the staff come to me, I don't bother to take photograph with them or click or what is patient, nothing. We had one of our staff was clipping shadow for his knee, and he is super duper intense. He saw the girl, there was a new guest, she wants to treat him, didn't see anything, took all the treatment. So after forty minutes, I had any S S F, ultrasound, went to the sport, everything. He, she asked, how are you feeling? He said, you treated my right knee, I have all my problem in left knee. And so he understood, he is like, so if you are going to show all that thing with them, just be normal, they love you when you are normal. They love when you are just going to treat them as a patient, so treat them as a patient, they love it.
Great, thank you, sir, I think being simple is the most difficult thing.
My, I feel what was I learned, what was I have learned, is, uh, they say when a tree has a lot of roots, it goes down.
That's true, sir.
So I feel with time, twenty-five years that I've been practicing, I have only learned that. And then I'm not, I said I'm not modern, morning they told me to come in suit and tie and all that. Otherwise, if they allow me, I will just come in burkuda and a t-shirt and speak at any conference. And so it's not that I need to, but you have to keep the decency decorum of innovation ministers coming, somebody coming. So to keep up with that, otherwise I am very simple, I need to tell me roads. I think yesterday they came to pick me from airport, they were talking, huh, sure, right. So they were talking about great pains of, I said all that I can do and I've eaten in all the five stars. We wanted the road side.
Achit sir, sir, Kavatki, famous Kachori, famous Kachori. Kavatki, what is famous?
I have a patient coming from Jaipur in Mumbai. He, at least every two or three months, he gets the Kachori.
Oh, so Achit sir, now we have to.
I think, you know, the lesson of the whole training is, you have to work hard, you have to be skilled enough and you know all that. But I think what I got, uh, lesson for me is, whatever you do, do, and star of the movie, Dilse. I think whatever he does.
Dilse, yes.
Dilse should be there, I have a heart specialist, so I believe in that.
So from a heart specialist, direct Dilse, very nice, blood sample, sir.
Be nice to your patients, please, I have received a lot of complaints from parents, they call me. And, uh, please call them also. So when you are going home, if you give a call to your mom, I'm coming home, you need anything, they will feel nice. And once a time, a number of days she makes food for you and food for you, sometimes if you are at home, you also make a shot for them. Right? You see, I see three thousand physios coming out every year, three thousand physios coming out every year. Hardly ten of them make name for themselves. When I meet all ten of them, I find out they are very, very close to them all. Right, so the blessing, I, in all religion it says, if there is heaven, it is under your mother's feet. So maybe, no, sir, even it's, uh, I'm talking about eighty-five, eighty-six, just started practicing. So I, I'm very close, how I was, I lost my dad ten years back, I lost my mom three years back, I was very close to them. This is very important, uh, flat next to my mom's flat was on sale. So that time, I'm talking about in eighties, the price was six lakh rupees. But the guy asked me, fourteen lakh rupees, so I asked him, let me check it. So he said, I just said fourteen, thinking you will reduce. I said, I don't need, thanks my parents, you tell me your price. And I'm saying that, I'm still saying that, I'm saying that, then I bought the next flat also now, doubled it up so that it is big. But I wanted to be close to them, morning I had to have, while going to the hospital, I had to meet my mom if I was in Mumbai. Or give a call if I was not in Mumbai. And night before sleeping, I have a number of time I have told her that, seven o'clock if I was not at home, seven thirty I should get a call, okay, where are you? I said, mom, I'm fifty years old, you're still asking me where I am? He said, no, I thought you have not come to meet me. So this is, this is how it is, please call, at least a lot of mothers are complaining. Please, they spend a lot, I never want a parent to tell you, at least let your parent tell you, whatever you have spent on you. My dad had plantar fasciitis, I treated him with moxibustions, the Chinese method, one treatment, if the patient cares already, it's just one thing. Moxibustions, through ginger, I gave, through ginger. Hopefully next time, I'll demonstrate here. So one evening, next morning, I'm very scared to go near him, because the baby is big. He says, God, will your son work with you? I said, yes. He says, whatever I have spent on him, wasul. I said, what happened? He said, my brain. But please get them on your parents and believe in the start in this technique that I showed you all for neck and back. Open up the neck, open up the deck, they will feel nice, and they should, you know, the healing hand comes with their blessing. Thank you.
I think we have a wonderful session, just a small announcement, anybody who, because you know, senior team, Bollywood stars, anybody who wants, uh, Chahadkar, he, he uses a photograph. Just to come here, all time more, and then he will give his output.
No, no, I'm just, I have a flight at one o'clock. So I'm going to start at eleven o'clock, I don't mind, even if five people are sitting, it doesn't matter to me, because I feel I have to give my knowledge. Uh, I'm prepared with my physiotherapy in India, many people wanted to know. So I'll be speaking in the morning, I'll be nine thirty this.
Be on time?
Nine thirty, I'll tell you what, everything about physiotherapy as a profession, going back to two thousand five hundred years back, the history of, we were before medicine. Physiotherapy was before medicine, I will prove that to you all. And I'll come down, what is the latest and what are the new specialties that will come, and from here I'll stay, go to the airport, thanking them, lovely to see your campus.
We are making, we are making progress, sir.
Coffee now, we have dinner now.
Oh, so we started coffee and we are, we have.
Thank you, I can only pray for you, may God give you a healing hand, that is the most important.
Dilse. She wants to ask one question.
Yes, go ahead, go ahead, please ask all your questions now, ask, yes, go ahead. She got it, she got it.
Good evening, sir, uh, my question is, how we balance, uh, theory paper and practical paper? Because we have to study lots of subjects.
Listen, I have never been to a library. I have never been, but when I was sitting in the class, my concentration was on the professor. I could grasp everything the professor said. If any question that was taken, now also then I stop, never ask a question which is not being taken. If the lecture has not been taken, don't ask that question. Your body, this mind that we are working is only eight percent. Ninety-two percent is still vacant. So when you are in the class, you are playing with your mobile, you are trying to write, when you write, neither you write, neither you listen. So please, that system of writing notes has gone, be alert, sit like that, and think you are recording, and your brain records, right? So for me was, I have never been to a library, and always throughout my career in first three, either I was second, either I was third, or I was first. Certain subject I was good, like anatomy, I was always first, nobody could, because mainly I was more into dissection and I should have it, right? But if somebody was there, physiology, maybe I was second, right? So in all subject, if you are attentive, it's like you do some of them, have grasped everything that was said. So studies is like that, there is nothing in practical, nothing in theory, whatever the subject is, don't buy hard. Many, many of the student think, give me by heart, that question, no, you should understand it. And write in your own words, as if I was the examiner, I love to read, I come to know. My, I take PhD exam, entrance exam for Mumbai University, and master in finance, I take exam. You will believe I make the students sit in the library of the college, without any supervisor. If I have to correct the paper, I know whether they are writing it from the book or they are writing in their own words. So you are allowed to write master's finance exam, sitting in the library of your college, I don't mind. I close the door from outside, after three, I'll come and take the papers, I'm not interested to know, let them talk it. You come to know. So please, if you change the system of understanding, please, the brain, the brain regenerates, right? The brain resets from eleven to four. So if you say, instead of eleven, I sleep at twelve, and get up at nine in the morning, you have lost one hour. So by ten, and best eating is early eating, six, seven, seven eat, right? By ten, you should be in your bed, by eleven, you should fall asleep. And so when you come, your body has reset into well, so whether you get up at six, seven, eight, four o'clock. But don't cross the eleven, you cannot be awake after eleven, the resetting time goal you are wasting. The regeneration, the natural event is not happening, right? So learn, get up early morning, whatever you are doing, WhatsApp at twelve o'clock, do it at four in the morning, let everybody get up. You start setting that, so these are the simple things, let's learn from the animals, they do that. And they get up early morning, first thing again, when they get up, they go and have water, they will go to a river side, otherwise there is water. Right, we don't, so get up in the morning, get one glass of water, two glass of water, and sleep early. Do at least some exercises, whatever, okay, I always tell student, some part you should walk. So don't go for train, don't go for bus, whatever you can walk, walk, instead of taking a bus outside here, go walk to the gate and fill the bus, I'll sit from there. Get down there and walking, right, always take steps, don't take elevators. When you are taking steps, hopefully, next time I do a lecture only on fitness, I talk, when you climb the steps, you are going to two thousand five hundred calories. When you are walking, I call it gossip walking. So I told the students from Mangalore, after they should have a dinner at seven o'clock, right? And all of them complained, they are putting on weight, I said, chale jaap, walk at this far. So after two months, when we saw all at increased weight, so I found out suddenly asking them question, where you go to walk? They said, from where I can get ice cream. So they burn four hundred, five hundred calories, they eat an ice cream, which is four hundred calories. So they don't burn, they will, they will eat, so I said, no walking. So it's again, I always tell, if your parents give you two hundred rupees every morning, you are going to college, this is two hundred rupees. So if you are going to spend only fifty rupees, at the end of the month, you say something. So when you are eating, human beings were not made for four weeks. You have breakfast for home, come here, and somebody is supposed to continue, you go to the candy, and I have breakfast again with that person. Right, then you want lunch, then if you go home, you want something, again, you know you want, two meals. You make two meals, but see the number of meals that we take, and then fried, right? Hopefully, good, so be alert in your class, grasp it. I never, you will never find my notes, never, and still I was talking. But be attentive in the class, see what the person is saying, tense, I have a problem, it does not seem to come and talk on that topic. Right, and you want to write, so the faster you try to write, you miss something, so you are not recorded, you are not. Right, and you want to write, so the faster you try to write, you miss something, so you have not recorded, you have not written well. So both, they said, you want to read, you are not, you don't know, they say, a housewife complained to the husband. Husband was a doctor, so he should write letters, that he was a doctor, so he said, please don't write long letters, the chemist refuses to read for me. So you have the chemist to read, right, so your notes are like that, you also can't read after you have written. Just, when you are revising and you want to read, you are finding it, it is not making any sense to you. Good. Any questions? Any more questions? I should write a question, one more, so we will get the last question. Then we, if you find time tomorrow, we will have, yes, last question. Uh, we, sir, my. Sir, my answer is, we want to have bigger heights, we want to have such, bigger vision, we want to have, so first of all, we have to be original, unique. So, sir, how did you get your own dream? We talked about Dilse. After the patient, sometimes, what happened? A patient comes to me, and praises a physical therapist. So I ask, is she treating you? No, somebody else is treating, but this was the person who has received that, can I help you? Right, finds out from the card, who was treating what, please, your staff is busy, I will call you, be dead nice. So that blessing of the patient goes to that staff. Right, so just be nice to all of them, fifty percent is done if the way you behave with your, I have to give you an example. You must stand like this. It is my humble request, does it sound humble? No, sir. But if I say, it's my request, so the body language shows, the request is humble. So be nice to your patient, believe me, it makes a lot of difference, if fifty percent, how you deal with your patient. You can't see man, shara, let him want to look, you are here, we will like this, you are here, no. You have to win hearts, whether it's your colleague, whether it's your teacher, whether it's your pupil, whether it's your classmate, college mate, university mate. You have to start to winning, to learn that. Let's follow, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. So this be the end of this session, and so thanks a lot, thank you, sir. I think we can, we can listen to you for the whole night, it's been so interesting, we are close, we have a, that was really how it is done. That's why you are investing your time, and we were, actually, sir. You should give us standing ovation. Now I request, uh, vice chancellor, to please present a moment to, uh, Dr. Ali Rami, sir. It's our great, small way of saying, thanks for giving out time, and interacting with so informative discussion. I think the objective of positive, I agree with you.